Authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing software for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during the meeting through this platform and the public has access, excuse me, to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 929-205-6099. Meeting ID numbers, 869-075-36632. We're using the link provided on the posting of the agenda. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email dossecretary@mootnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Trish McCarthy, likely has a lot to share with us tonight, so Trish, take it away.
Okay, okay. Believe it or not, it's gonna be probably my shortest report that I've done. So, I know that makes you very sad. So I'm gonna start out, Governor Sununu, as you probably heard and announced yesterday that new funds are gonna be available from the CARES Act for youth programs, substance abuse, and veterans assistance. Our numbers as of this morning were 5,571 positive in New Hampshire. That's up by 121 since we last spoke Wednesday night. We have 4,316 recovered from COVID in New Hampshire. That's up by 176, so recoveries are good. Unfortunately, our deaths, we had 343 deaths currently. That's up from 12 from last Wednesday. Our operations division in the state, they said no significant changes really in aviation rail, excuse me, or bus service. They're also saying that we have more OHR accidents, and they're indicating that it's because tourists are now coming back into New Hampshire. They also said that our tasks are starting to populate, and the tasks are what Larry and I have to do when we're requesting supplies. And they're starting to populate, and they're saying people are getting a little sidetracked. We're getting so comfortable, as they put it with the COVID drumbeat, that they're afraid they're missing things. So they're reminding the locals to check the tasks and resend them so that nothing gets missed. The administration and finance department says everybody's working on grants, busily submitting documents. They're getting many calls coming in on opening guidelines, both from the public and municipalities. They, I have, the joint, the JIC, Joint Information Command Center, says that there's a lot of online conversations surrounding the Governor's reopening plans, obviously, and the economy, and of course about racism and law enforcement reform. The AG's office gave us some further information. Some of it you may know because you watch the news. Activities that are going to be open to some capacity, starting on Monday, June 29th, are performance arts centers, indoor movie theaters, which freaks me out, overnight camps, amusement parks, adult day services, and arts and music education. They also said outdoor concerts can now take place again because the executive order number 52 terminated gathering restrictions. So now everybody can gather. Outdoor events and concerts are allowed, and municipalities are encouraged just to use the guidelines put out for the state while they're allowing gathering to happen. They also said that there's new performance arts guidelines that was published yesterday. I didn't bother opening that up or reading it because typically I don't report on that. Let me move on. Okay, that's it. I consolidated all those days into that little bit.
Wow, good job. Good job. One thing I wanted to touch upon, and maybe Trish has more information, but as I alluded to at the beginning, Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, that's the thing I read at the beginning of each meeting. And for those who don't realize what that is, that is the 91A temporary release of restrictions about a quorum being present for meetings of boards. So that allows us to meet via Zoom. That allows us to meet virtually without a physical location. So that expires, is supposed to expire on June 26th. As the Governor, Trish, do you know, you might not know, has any indication been given to extending that part of the order?
Actually, that was on our legal call question people were asking, and right now they're not giving any indication that that will be extended. We'll know more on Friday's call, but that's the 26th, I think.
Okay, perfect. So the reason I wanted to bring it up is because if boards are thinking about having in-person meetings, it's as simple as this. If that emergency order gets lifted on the 26th, we will have no choice but to have physical meetings. We won't be able to do this anymore. If that, if that order gets extended, which I think it might, if that order gets extended, we can keep on doing what we're doing, but we might decide as a Board of Selectment, we want to release the restriction on gatherings at the Town Hall and provide a means for at least part of the meeting to be public. So what I would suggest to the Board is, despite the rumors in the air, the Board has made no decision one way or the other because I think we're all kind of waiting for the Governor. So next Wednesday night's COVID meeting, to me, is when we will have more information and need to decide whether we want to reopen Town Hall to meetings or not. Does the Board agree with that?
Matt?
Go ahead, Larry.
So I assumed, and I probably assumed wrong, that the meeting that we had the other day with the plans that we were talking about, that we were gonna bring it to the Select Board as if any committee wanted to meet live, that they could, starting after July 6th. So that was probably my mistake when I mentioned it to the Planning Board last night, that we might be able to go live on the 14th, and that's why that hit Facebook today, I found out about an hour ago. Because we did go up and took measurements up at Town Hall, and it's 18 residents with seven committee members would be the capacity. I know the Planning Board was all for meeting live on the 14th, but again, it's up to the Board, and Trish's committee is eager to meet live too. So you do have boards that want to meet, so if we can wait till the 26th, that's good. But I just wanted to let you know that some of the Boards do want to meet live. Because right now, the Planning Board, last week we had five public hearings, now we're backing up, we have eight. And if we don't start doing something, we're gonna start meeting three nights a week, and nobody has time for that.
Yeah, so that's good info. Thank you for that. The, you know, my thing was I just didn't want anybody to think, because the Board hadn't voted one way or the other yet. So until the Board votes, it kind of doesn't happen. But like I said, if the emergency order is lifted, it's not even a, it's not even a discussion, just the social distancing is the discussion. But, so I mean, that's, that's good to know. You guys, obviously, on the Planning Board are gonna have a huge agenda with potentially a lot of butters and petitioners. So we have to think about that, but I still think we have a little bit of time on those.
Hey, Matt, Roger has a question. He has his hand up.
Who is that?
Roger.
Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, okay. The Planning Board last night spent a lot of time talking about it. And what we think is more workable is if we meet in person, or if we're allowed to meet in person, we would also like to broadcast over Zoom to allow the public to participate remotely. And also, you know, some of our members, under normal law, but what, if you, what one member of the Board can be remoted in a, you know, in-person meeting?
It's, you just need a quorum.
You need a quorum i-in the physical space, and the others could participate remotely?
If the Chair allows, yes.
Okay, that's easy.
Yeah.
But, okay, but really, we would like to be able to do that, you know, and to, we probably would need some assistance from Diane to work out the logistics of how to have a physical meeting and at the same time have a Zoom meeting going on.
Right. So Diane, are you available to assist with that? I know we gave you a little bit of a heads up about the question.
Yeah, so what we've done is, the cable station manager, Jamie and I met yesterday, and we went through a scenario that we think will work. It's not pretty. There's no way to like hook into the cable station hardware directly, so we have to have a laptop set up on the, in the Town Hall, connected to the projector, and then that gets broadcast over channel 20. Excuse me, well, so you would hook up, you would hook up, you'd be running your Zoom meeting that way, and the members would still be in the Town Hall that you could be. Then, then I guess it would be me, would be controlling the Zoom meeting for those who want to look at it from home. The thing you need to understand is that there is a delay between what goes out on cable and what is said in the hall, and it's about a five-second delay. So you need to understand that you have to pause and let a question come in or whatever needs to be done.
Okay, I'm glad you're working on it. And yes, I think we would need you there to control the Zoom meeting because I don't think that Jim can't do regular AA work during the meeting and control the Zoom meeting at the same time.
Correct.
Good, thank you very much.
Yeah, I would, I would pack a lunch, Diane, that's gonna be a long meeting. You get a lot of stuff on that agenda, but, so, let's, let's wait and see, I guess. We're gonna have a lot new, a lot of more information to help make our decision, I think, next time, so, if that's good.
Right. And, and so some of that legal call, which is all gonna, you know, come out on Friday, municipalities were asking, well, if he, you know, terminates that order, can, can people still meet via Zoom if they want to? And then some people said, well, if we've got a small Town Hall, maybe just the committee members will meet in the physical location to comply with right to know, and then the public could be allowed to Zoom in. And so all of this is gonna be discussed on that emergency order on Friday.
Right, right. So good, we'll have more to help us make our decision. All right, so Trish, are you the one speaking on the task force stuff, or?
I'm you. Yep. So just to give you a little bit of update, the panels, obviously, you know, we put out first deposit for the panels. I've been, Diane and I, sorry, my tongue is getting in the way here. Diane and I have been talking on a regular basis, as well as Mark. I did reach out to Mark today after Diane and I spoke, and Diane, hopefully this will make you happy, the, he will be able to install the panels on Thursday morning, July 9th. Now, yes, that's after July 6th, but the reason that date was discussed is because Diane was working on the life safety fire stuff, and they can do that on July 10th, and we were trying to do this consecutive days. So if, right now, the panels, I told him I'd meet in there Thursday morning at 8:30 in the morning to do the panels, and then the safety stuff Diane's got scheduled for the 10th, and then Tony can do the cleaning that we ordered, and then Larry and I can come in maybe on Sunday and put down the floor signage that we've got because the floor will have been cleaned. So I think that makes sense, but obviously the Board of Selectment has to decide. The other thing to give you updates is the sanitizer stations, Tony has been putting them around. Today, we marked where they should go in the Town Hall. Kim and Diane and Mary Jo and Nancy and everyone looked at the downstairs. The only thing I had to do was change the poster note for Tony to be the height that is required to be ADA compliant. So we did that downstairs, and we did that upstairs as well, so Tony will know where to put them upstairs. As Larry mentioned, he and I went and we did all the measurements upstairs at Town Hall to go, you see the chairs are all up there, and it will take, I think, I thought we counted 20 residents. Larry, I think you said 16, so maybe it was 16 because of the podium. And then plus the committee members will, and what we're gonna do is tape down, and Tony can mark the tape where the chairs are. The rest of the chairs, we're gonna have to either corden off somehow or put signs on them so people aren't inclined to just grab a chair and sit wherever they want. The other thing is, and this is unexpected, I, Nanty's on the call, Diane, Larry, at the very last minute today before I left the fire station, I got the estimate for the signs that the task force wanted an estimate on, and, you know, they, I think I sent a copy to you, but I'm not sure. I didn't, I got the copy, it's $325. I'm throwing this out there so that the Selectmen know, but not everyone on the committee responded to me to, to discuss it with you guys, so I don't know how you want to handle it. If you need me to wait a week, it just means it might take longer to get them. I'll do whatever you guys want, but it's from fast signs, we've done business with them, the Fire Department has, Conservation has, they're good signs, and we've got one that says open by appointment, 24 by 18. We've got another, not three that say do not enter restricted area, 12 by 18. We've got a restroom sign nine by nine with braille so that we're ADA compliant. We've got two that say authorized personnel, one that says entrance, one that says exit with the proper fire, you know, that it's the proper red for fire. And to design all of them, it's a one-time design fee, so even if we have to get more, we won't be charged it, and it's, that's $45. So the whole bill is 325. I'll send it to all of you, but I, I kind of like to wait for the task force to respond so that I'm not, you know, speaking out of turn here, asking for a recommendation. Somebody, I might have been Kate, was curious about what we've spent so far. The foot signs were, foot signage was about $248. The panels were 2,200. The sanitizers, and Chief Stewart might have to weigh in on this, I know there were 20, 2,800, but then I don't think that included the separate gallons of, I was gonna say liquor, ooh, wouldn't that be good? The separate gallons of sanitizers, so I'm not sure about that. I couldn't quite find that invoice. I found the packing slip, but not the invoice. And then the signs for 325, and then about it. I mean, everything's moving along very quickly. We, Diane, I believe, sent you the guidelines, access to Town Hall. The one thing that I have to bring up, and Matt, you know about it because at the last minute, I think I emailed you.
Yep.
The Attorney, the Attorney General's office has to get back to me, along with Municipal Association Legal. We may not be able to say children are not allowed in the building. It could be a problem for us. One of the legal people that I talked to said, if people can't leave their kids, can't leave their kids at home, so they bring them, we're gonna find ourselves with kids in cars, and I'm sure Chief Stewart doesn't want that, nor do we. They said it may make more problems for us. We might have to say something a little nicer, like when possible, leave children at home or something like that. But I'll give you the exact answer as soon as Legal and the AG's office gets back to me tomorrow. But other than that, one thing on the form, it would be great if you Selectmen could look at it and see if it's okay, because our plan was, we're gonna print this out in color, and it's gonna be posted in the brochure box that we're gonna put on the other side of Town Hall, so now people know what's expected when they come into Town Hall. And I think, Matt, you, both you and Tina, a little concerned about the screening log. Both Chiefs maybe can weigh in. Some towns, some towns have even more complicated ones, but I feel like they're asking everything except what you ate this morning. Some are, some are just doing, you know, the honor system. Do you have any symptoms, like Matt, you suggested? Tina was concerned about, you know, she's dealing with people that might not want their name written down, and also don't want a phone number written down. So I'm tossing that out to the Selectmen to maybe give us guidance, and if so, then we'll have to change our flyer that we might do. And I think that's what I wanted to cover.
Yeah, I'd just jump off of what Trish was just saying. My concern about having a log is, the log we have planned is kind of an unattended log, you know what I mean? So, you know, Cheryl, Mary Jo, all those folks are gonna be busy working, so this log will be sitting there. What, what, I don't so much want to create a medical record for everybody who wants to walk through the door, but we just want to get the mitigation message out. So for instance, like I said it last time, when you go to the daycare right now, they take the kids' temperatures, then they ask you, have you, they ask you all the CDC questions. Have you traveled? Are you feeling ill? And then if your answer is no to all of those, then the kids go in. What, it's kind of the honor system, obviously, because you could lie. But really what it is, is it's designed to bring to attention to people that they need to worry about this stuff, right? So when, when someone wakes up in the morning and has, you know, symptoms, they say, I'm not going in today. So what, what I was thinking is, the same things that are kind of asked in the log, you could post on the front door and say, attention, or stop, if you have these symptoms, if you have this, please do not enter, you know? And so that's, I'll just, I'll just leave it there. That was my thought, and forego the, the log where everybody's signing all their info.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I completely get it.
So that's my two cents.
What if we just, what if we just did the name and not all the personal questions so that they would be able to trace who was in the Town Hall if somebody did get sick?
Well, they know the name because they've got an appointment.
Okay.
So that's a register somewhere else, like Mary Jo's register of?
Right.
I think, Matt, we can just do three questions, like your name, your temperature, and any travel. That's it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Is that verbal or on this form that they're gonna sign? Are we doing away with the form?
On the, no, on the form. It'd just be your name, your temperature, and any, any out-of-state travel.
Now, Mary Jo did say, and I don't think she's on the call, but Mary Jo did say that she asks these questions when everybody calls to make an appointment. So she's doing this already. So maybe if it became a recommendation from the Selectmen, that whoever's scheduling people to come in to see them, whether it's Planning, or Nancy, or Kim, or anyone, they ask the questions so that we don't have this written log anywhere.
And I, I would be okay with that because the other thing is too, is I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, out there on the, on the web somewhere, the CDC, like, training video where
Yep.
They essentially, once they take it, they become HIPAA certified for this purpose, so that if they're asking it verbally, then they can, you know, they, they know not to advertise this information. My concern is, I am reading on, in some news article, that the CDC is getting pushback from some, I'll say it, the lawyers, from, from some of this stuff. So we, what we want to do is, we want to protect our people by asking really sort of background questions, but not create medical records that could be abused, I guess you'd say.
Matt, Tina has her hand up.
Tina?
Hi, well, I've already used it once so far, and this is just how I'm kind of running it, and I just wanted to run it past you guys to make sure it's all right. I basically wrote out, you know, the CDC questions, the, have you had a fever, any respiratory symptoms, flu-like symptoms, changes in sense of taste or smell. And I have that written out on a piece of paper, and then I have just kind of like a flip pad of paper where I have people sign in the date, the name, their phone number, what are your answers? You know, usually, it's always no to everything. And then there, I do ask them to take their temp before they come in, and that way, it's on a flip pad, so I just flip it so that nobody else sees that entry.
Yeah, I think that's better than what we're talking about, but I don't know if we want to kill that many trees when we're old, you know what I mean? Like if Mary Jo has maybe triple or quadruple the amount of people you have coming in.
Right.
My, my thing is, I think, and we'll hear from the rest of the Board, but I think if we're asking the questions, maybe we need to pose this over this next week to Mary Jo and Cheryl, but if they're asking the questions, I don't care if they're recorded. What does the Board think about that?
That's fine with me.
Kate? Are you still with us?
Yeah, I had to unmute.
Okay. Dinner's ready.
No, that's someone just turned the volume off.
So basically, is there a way the task force can just consult all of those, not just Mary Jo and Cheryl, but all of those who are going to see residents? Are they okay with doing this in advance on the phone, or just verbally somehow before entrance? And they don't have to keep records, they just have to know, and if they're okay with it, I think we're okay with it.
So there'd be no sign-in at all?
Well, there'd be a sign-in for the appointment.
And you could even do something as generic as, and this, this sign-in shows that you have been asked questions on the phone or whatever. No, but just, they wouldn't come in if they hadn't been asked the questions, right? Basically?
Yeah, that's the
So Matt, I have two more questions.
Okay, I'll give you three if you want, but go ahead with two.
So I, I agree with the, with the children part, because being summertime, and one parent probably at home, like anyone's work, and they need to take the kids, so we need to be real, walk a fine line on that one. And number two, on, on one of the lines that says one person at a time at Town Hall, is that one person for building, one person for the town clerk, one person to see Diane, and one person to see Nancy, or is it just one person, not two or three?
What was that, guys? Do you remember?
I think right now, we're just doing the soft opening with Mary Jo's office to see how it goes.
Yeah.
Because we're not, Diane and I don't plan on being in there right now until we see how that goes first, and Barbara would not be working with the public at all.
Yeah, yeah. So that helps. So I guess that answers the second question, but the first question with Larry, and I agree, is, and Trish is gonna get a response back on this from the AG, but I don't see how we can say no kids. I kind of look at it like supermarkets, right? I haven't brought my kids to a supermarket since March.
Right.
One, one of us always goes, you know? But not everybody can do that. So what was happening with, I think there were a couple of supermarkets at the beginning of this thing that were telling people not to come in with kids, and that got, that got done away with very quickly for the same reasons we're talking about. So
Right.
I think we're gonna be in that boat where we can recommend, but we can't say no kids.
I need my third question.
Oh, all right.
So you mentioned the soft opening to the So you, you mentioned the soft opening to the town clerk. When do we lift the restrictions for everybody else to go to work? Is that when he lifts the emergency order on Friday or it's up to the board?
I, I think it's the latter. I think that's what we decided. We could do something different, obviously, but I think we wanted to see how the soft opening goes and then go from there.
And what's the timeframe on the soft opening? Nobody put a timeframe.
Well, it's not going to be July 13th. So the earliest it could be would be July, um, 13th.
So July 13th, for how long do you plan on going soft? For three weeks, four weeks, one week?
Till I retire?
Yeah, well, I know that's what some people are hoping that.
I, I think, I think the soft process was once, once we got the soft opening started, we were going to toss it back to those selectmen and say, you know what? After a week or two, this is going good, you know, what do you think? And so it's, it's really going to be up to you selectmen.
Yeah, the way I see it is, so we do the soft opening, we're meeting every Wednesday, right? On this subject. So every Wednesday, we kind of take the pulse of the situation. And who knows, maybe, maybe we're hearing feedback from Mary Jo and Cheryl that says everything's fine, bring them in. Or maybe they say, no, no, no. So I think we got to play it by ear.
Does it, does it depend on the number of positive cases if they start going up? Didn't we say we'd keep an eye on that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, who knows?
Yeah, we don't know.
Right, exactly.
But it could, you know, it could be a week, I think, of just a, a partial opening. I think that's what we're saying is a partial opening. Could be just a week, could be two weeks, could be a year. And I don't think it'll be a year, but, but we just need to, uh, play it by ear, I think.
Yeah. I, so I have a question, and maybe I should have asked this before we were talking about Pete, committee's meeting. Conservation was hoping, we've been meeting regularly, um, Zoom meetings, although last week we had a live meeting at one of our committee members' homes and we social distanced and got eaten alive. Um, but we did it, but we need to have another meeting next week. And so, like, and obviously I'm going to have to post it because of right to know. So based on Friday's decision, um, if, when we're talking on Wednesday night, that doesn't give me enough notice to post for Thursday, should I talk to the committee members and say, we'll have to do it elsewhere to have our live meeting?
I think so.
Because Mike Verone needs to come and talk to us and, and it's about a scenic road, so we need to do this now. We can't wait because he's got to start working on the road.
You know what I, you know what I would do? And maybe you need dragon mosquito help, but, um, I would meet in the parking lot of town hall.
Okay.
And then it, the address is the same. If we change the current profile and open up the town hall to you, you're still at the same spot, right?
Right. Okay.
Just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Any other questions on the reopening task force?
Excuse me, this is Carrie.
Carrie?
Hi, we had, um, the Board of Selectmen and I had our meeting today and we did approve guidelines and, um, with a, a couple of amendments that I made and I sent them back out to the board for their response. But once we're in agreement, uh, we intend to forward you a copy. So maybe Diane, you could put them on the town webpage because we're going to post them on the library and our Facebook page. So, um, let's see, I wanted to go back, um, how would my page go? But, um, we plan on having a soft opening and it would start July 6th. And it's only going to be twice a week. It's going to be very minimal to begin with because we figured we'll start, we can always go up, but we just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we don't know what to expect really, how this is going to go. So at least this way, we'll have two times a week, two hours, and we'll, we can go from there. And, um, so I will forward that to you once, probably tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So I wanted to.
And I, I think what you meant to say at the beginning is the library trustees met, right? You said
Yes.
You said the Board of Selectmen.
I'm sorry. I was trying to pull up my document while we were speaking. You know how it happens when you're multitasking? But, um, I'm trying to pull it because I had towns that I was looking at during this meeting and I just wanted to bring up that. So I have multiple tabs open here. Pardon me. Thank you for that. So I just wanted to get that up.
Carrie, this is Tricia. So I have a question. So, um, the panel guy said that we're, we're not doing town hall till July 9th. There's a good chance that all your products will be in. So are you going to open before the panels are put in?
Well, we're just having minimal staff members in at the most, three. So we're not opening to the public and we don't know when that time may be. We're going to, um, aware of the progress and there again, health information. And it may be, right, it may be a couple of weeks, it could be a month, it could be longer than that. Um, but we, we don't have any intending to open to the public right at this time.
Okay. So I'll get ahold of you when your product comes in because it might be that the week of, you know, the sixth to the ninth, whatever that is.
Okay.
But I'll get ahold of you once I know for sure.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that sounds good.
Yep.
Tricia?
Yes.
Do you want to have the board vote to get those signs so that, you know, not to exceed or whatever, so we can get that order in?
I mean, I'd love to, but how do you feel about the fact that I sent it out to the, um, committee, but, uh, Diane responded, I think you responded, Larry, I think responded, Charlie's obviously tied up and I don't know if any, Tina might have responded, but I'd love to get that ordered, but I didn't want to overstep my bounds.
What's the, um, what's the to not exceed, what, did you say $250?
$325.
No, the estimate for the signs is $325.
So I'll make the motion to allow the Trish to order the sign for town hall not to exceed $350.
Can I get a second from Kate, hopefully?
Yes, I second the motion.
Awesome. So let's, uh, do a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Kate, aye and Matt's aye, so that's unanimous. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to switch gears a little bit, but still on COVID-19. Um, I just want to say something, the board can jump in at the end, tell me if they disagree with me or they agree with me, hopefully. Um, I'm not speaking about anybody specifically, but I wanted to address the residents of the town. And what I wanted to say is, I wanted to talk a little bit about the rules in town, uh, regarding businesses. And these rules, and I'll, I'll explain how this gets to COVID in a minute, but these rules have been around a long time, before I lived here, before I was probably even born. And some of those rules include, if you want to have a business in town, whether you have residential land or commercially zoned land or light industrial or, um, village district, you need to go to the planning board and the planning board has to review your site plan and approve it. That's what every business in town had to do. If you go up 108, every business had to do this. That's, that's not a special rule that we only enforce with certain businesses. They all, all have had to do it. Maybe there's a business in town that's a hundred years old that didn't have to do it. I don't know. But all the ones I can think of had to. Now there's another type of business you can have in town. It's called a peddler or a peddler's license. This is like a mobile food truck, food cart, whatever. You can have those in town too. We've had a few, uh, not a lot, but if you want to be a food peddler, you have to get a peddler's license and those expire. You can't have a peddler's license for life. If you had a peddler's license before and you let it expire, you cannot keep using it. That's just a rule. That's a fact. Additionally, the peddler's license requires that you get approval since you're dealing with food from the state board of health. That expires as well. It doesn't just automatically update, it expires and you have to, uh, you have to pay for that. Now, if you go into any of our food businesses in town, I guarantee, well, I better not guarantee, but I strongly believe you'll see it. They all have their food vending license in a little frame somewhere in their establishment. I've seen it on food trucks before. Now, every now and then, and the town's not obligated to do this, but every now and then the town might throw a bone to somebody and say to them, you know, hey, uh, you're a business owner in town, we'd invite you to do your business, your food vending or whatever on town property, uh, just to give them, you know, a chance to make a little money, maybe even give them money to, um, to charity. And when we do that, we're not obligated to do that, but what we do is we ask them for insurance with a hold harmless clause to the town. Why do we do that? Cause we don't want the town open to liability. If you don't have insurance, we're probably not going to let you come on to town property and sell your goods. We've done it at, uh, Old Home Day. You see the fried dough guy, he's got insurance, he had to provide insurance. Insurance costs money. If you don't have insurance, we probably, uh, will not work with you. So here's the thing, everything I just listed, if for some reason, and it's not just some reason, because it's happened in all the years I've been on the board, if there's somebody who's not compliant with any of these rules, we may have to address it as a board of selectmen. When we address it as a board of selectmen, we do it in what's called a non-public meeting. In a non-public meeting, under 91A, under reputation, we're allowed to have non-public meetings. We do so because we don't want to publicly shame people. We don't want to put their names out there without all of the facts. So what we do is we meet in non-public to protect reputations, discuss it, and then decide what to do next. This board has always done that, probably always will do that because we believe in the integrity of people's identities and not harming reputations. Now, this is where I'm going to get on to COVID-19. We've been saying this from the beginning, and I got to say that this board has been meeting at times four nights a week during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we've said it from the beginning, I've said it a million times, people in this town are under a lot of stress. They are under a lot of stress and our job during this pandemic has been to try to lessen their stress. And most importantly, has been to give people a, a little patience, have a little patience with people because people are under stress, under stress. But I'm going to say this to, to, uh, some residents we've heard from this week on social media, they need to calm down because everybody's on a, under a lot of stress. And what we have to be careful of is words can hurt, okay? Words can cause problems. Chief Jewitt can tell you if, if, he'll bend your ear. During this pandemic, we've had a rise in, uh, in, in, uh, in household calls, we've had people firing guns at other people. We've had a resident who complained about a speeding motorist who got beat up and sent to the hospital because they complained about a motorist. So what I'm saying is, if you're going to get on social media and threaten people, then you're going to, you're going to cause people to feel threatened and be scared. Words can do that to people. So we need to take responsibility. Fact of the matter is during a pandemic like this, we need to come together. And I will tell you right now, everybody on this phone call that works in the town hall, any of our town buildings, does something every day for this community that probably goes unnoticed, but is helping the community get through this pandemic. So when they're accused of being crooked or being underhanded, you're going to get some people upset. I don't know if you can tell, but I'm upset. So basically where I wanted to leave this is everybody on this board, I guarantee everybody on this board supports small businesses in this town. So much so, we throw them, uh, throw them opportunities, throw them a bone, if you will, but people have to follow the rules and that's just the way it goes. If people don't follow the rules, then we have to take steps that none of us feel good about, about taking. But we need to look at each other, realize we're all residents of this town and we need to work together, we need to have patience with each other and we need to act to protect people's lives, to protect people's property and not threaten people unjustifiably. So that's all I wanted to say. Anybody else on the board have anything to add?
Beautifully expressed, thank you.
So Matt, in the, in regards to, I think we all know who you, who you were referring to as
I'm not referring, Larry, I'm not referring to anybody specifically.
Well, I, I just wanted to give an example that we had an issue last year with, with another small business for some of the same reasons. And it, he had to comply and he did comply. So it's not, I just want to make it look like it wasn't a, I don't know, I don't want to use the word attack on a, a certain individual, but it happened to another business last year and they understood it and they, they, um, complied with, with the codes and the violations and I'll just leave it at that.
Imagine that.
So. And, and, well, well, the biggest thing was, um, the 108 state highway within the, the 10 feet zone.
Yeah.
And he, he had to move it and, and he did. So the ru, the rule is the rule, it's a state rule, it's not a local rule.
Yeah, it's true. All right. Anybody else on that subject that I just spent too much time on? All right. I think, um, I think the next thing we had on the agenda was, and I'll, I'll try to go through this very quickly, is we, uh, had a lot of volunteers show up on a 90-degree day, I think most people are aware. They came to clean up the town beach for the residents and they did so, uh, they did a great job, but there were a lot of leaves that have to be, they have to get out of there somehow. I went down there with my truck, it would have taken me about 12 trips with my truck to get all the leaves out of there myself. Uh, so we're talking about potentially, if the board's agreeable, trying to hire a landscaper just to clean up, you know, with the leaf blowers and everything, bag up the leaves and get them out of there. And Diane, did you have more than one quote on that?
Yes, I have two quotes and basically the, the difference is one quote, they're both $450. One will just blow the leaves to the, uh, tree line. The other person is going to pick up the leaves that are inside the fence only and get rid of them. For an extra hundred dollars, you can have the leaves removed from the outside the fence if you wanted.
So what's the board think? I, I think we have, the recommission will kill me, but I think we have room in that budget.
Well, I would say get rid of them because you just blow them up against the fence and if the wind comes the next day and blows them back, you just wasted your money.
I agree. No, he's blowing them to the tree line where, you know, beyond the tree line, not near the fence, blowing them away from the fence into the tree line.
So they won't blow back on to the beach?
I would never guarantee that in this weather.
So is the 450, one's 450, one's 550?
It depends, it, it's 450 to get rid of the leaves, to have the leaves hauled up within the fence. The fence didn't, you know, the, the little, uh, what do they call it? Post and rail fence. There are some leaves on the side of the road that's on the other side of the, the post rail fence. If you want to get rid of those, that's an extra hundred.
So Matt, not knowing what it looks like, I'm going to leave it up to you, but I'd rather just get rid of them. So whichever way you want to go, I will vote for it. I didn't see the piles.
Yeah, because they really need to, to leave altogether. Uh, that's, that's not a joke. I didn't, um, so they have to make, they have to make like a tree and get out of there if somebody
Absolutely. I agree.
So Kate, what do you think?
Uh, so wait, wait, wait. He's leaving it up to you, but again, it's still being blown past the tree line. That's the way it is.
No, one of No, one of, the more expensive one gets them out of there, right?
And what's, what is, what is the budget support? I mean, that's really.
Coming from the recreation.
So the thing about the recreation is our budget, we're going to come way under this year because of COVID-19.
Oh, okay. Then I'd be in favor of whichever method is most effective.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to spend $550, correct Diane?
Correct.
On the landscaper that, we won't mention the name because of reputation, right? We are going to back up, make a motion to spend $550 to hire the landscaper to clean up and remove the leaves from town beach.
Second.
Segmented by Larry, discussion. Kate, how do you vote?
In favor.
Larry?
Yes.
And Matt's and I.
So Matt, Matt, can I just ask, why is it confidential to not mention the landscaper's name?
Well, it's, it's not that it's, let me back up because really what, what they'll suggest is you don't want to mention the landscaper. You do not choose because that could be basically saying they're, it could be detrimental to their reputation because you're saying they don't do good work or anything. So it's a good policy to have. But what's the landscaper for the 550, Diane?
S, STP Property Management. So Sam Tangle Peter.
So that's it. So let's add that to the motion then. If everybody's okay with that and that's the one we chose, we just won't mention who we're not choosing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right. On my agenda, the only other thing I had was minutes. Anything else somebody wants to mention before we do the minutes?
Yes, you have the police chief. That's not, you shouldn't, you mustn't have the right agenda. The police chief needs to talk to you about parking issues at the town beach and issue wristbands at the town beach.
All right. So chief, do you want to run through that quick? Is he on mute?
Yes, he is. Star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
There I am. Um, so over the last couple of weeks, we've been going down to the town beach and dealing with some of the parking complaints. Um, on, if you're looking at the town beach, the, to the entrance on Windmark Road, we have the, the white vinyl fence that goes along, uh, Windmark. There's five no parking signs that are there. I was there Friday. We had seven cars parked out in the road. Um, and, you know, causing a little bit of a, a parking issue for us. We're able to get the cars moved, but with the signs being, they're probably six feet from the road, uh, but they're behind the fence. Uh, you can see them, you know, pretty visible. My thinking was to add a no parking, um, I guess, I guess emblem on the ground. Have a, have it sprayed on the ground, no parking. I reached out to a company that does a lot of the markings for us for the town now. They had said that it'd be $300 to add the no parking signs on the road, uh, which would give us more visibility. They shouldn't be any, any issue or any reason why someone would park on top of that. I say that, but you never know. So I think that's one of the ways of combating the no parking issues we're having. We only have them, you know, it's not the entire summer, but you know, the hot days, we definitely have some issues. I think I had 17 cars in the parking lot the other day, plus the seven out on the road. So it was busy for sure.
So, so I think that's a good idea. I think it's worth it because the one thing I don't want to see is people going to the town beach and basically having to turn around because there isn't enough space. Or, you know, God forbid, uh, fire trucks, right? Emergency vehicles. So what's the, what's the board think?
I think that should go, just take it out of the rec fund. They have plenty of money.
I know, exactly.
Will they abide by that though?
Okay, you know, I couldn't tell you they would. I mean, we have five parking times.
How about if we put no parking tow zone, huh?
That's a good one because if they don't have parking and they're still doing it, I mean, well, they're not going to, will really, what's going to make them comply with a different marking? It's the only thing that concerns me.
That would be up to the town. Um, you know, if, if we want to stop towing vehicles, we most certainly can. You guys, you give me the direction and I'll follow it.
What about cones? Isn't that a good option?
I'd rather put a Jersey barrier up if we could.
I think if Charlie were here, he'd be in favor of the towing part. I just. But I would like to, how much were they going to cost you?
I believe it was $300 for five markings on the road.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to purchase the signs as proposed by the chief, not to exceed $400 and we'll charge those to the rec budget. You didn't hear me say that.
Hold on, second for discussion.
Sure.
Chief, what is the, what does the sign say? Just no parking?
Yeah, it just says no parking. Uh, it just mirrors the signs that are behind it. But, you know, I had a couple of people tell me on Friday that they didn't see the signs. So I figured, you know, maybe if we put them on the ground, you know, now we have a sign and it's, you know, visible on the ground. So it's in two spots.
So how about if we did, um, if, if they parked there, what is that, a $30 ticket?
A $30 fine, correct.
So if we put, um, no parking fire lane, is that ticket more money?
You know, I think it is. I don't have a ticket in front of me, uh, but I think that is. Don't quote me on it. I think it may be a $50 fine.
That might stand more ground if we put fire lane. I don't know if the fire chief's on. He can put his input on that one.
I'd have, if I may, I'd have to look at it and I, I, I could be off. It could be as high as $75 for being in the fire lane. But if you deem it a fire lane, then nobody can be there. And then I think that'll be more of a headache for the police department because then they would have to tow the vehicles out of there.
I think, I think deeming it a fire lane might require a public hearing, too.
Okay, we'll just leave it as no parking.
That's what I was thinking. Kate, what do you think?
Oh, sorry. I hope it works.
So that's an.
That's an eye.
Okay, cool. Larry, you're an eye?
Eye.
Matt's and I, that's unanimous. And chief, you were, you and I were talking about a potentially, maybe just a short-term fix about the wristbands?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I can talk about that for a second. So one of the other issues that we're having besides the parking issues down there is we're having a lot of people that are not Newton residents coming in using the beach. Um, I get it. It's hot. People want to cool down. But the problem is we have lifeguards that are there and I think that we're taxing the lifeguards by adding, you know, Friday, you know, I would venture to guess that we had 20 people on the beach. She didn't help with social distancing and everything else. I was giving it a little bit of thought and, you know, how do you, how do we maintain Newton residents on there? And I'm not sure as, as, that Alan is a new resident, you get a, kind of like what you would at a concert. I think they're fairly cheap. I haven't looked up how much they are. They have that, we know the resident. If they don't have one on, we know they've come from somewhere else. Um, I think it'd be a, a cheap fix and it helps with the, you know, with the amount of people we have on the beach.
Well, the only thing with that is I was down there the other day, uh, let's see, Thursday, Wednesday. I was down there Monday, no, Tuesday. And, uh, because my daughter and grandson were down there, but there was somebody down there who had, um, mask plates. But what they do is they come to Newton to babysit for a family. And so they actually brought the kids who actually live in Newton and their parents live in Newton down to the beach. Because they were worried about getting a ticket. And I says, well, if you see the cruiser, explain that to him that you're the babysitter taking the residents to the beach. Um, so I don't, I don't know if that would work or not, but we can give it some thought.
Yeah, and we get that a lot. I was down there on, uh, what's today's, Wednesday, I was down there on Monday and Tuesday and I saw several cows down there saying, I'm with this address. Um, you know, I'm the babysitter with kids. And I think if they, if they, that lifeguard and lifeguard, then.
He's breaking up. I can't hear him.
The chief's breaking up. I think, I think here's, here's what I've always thought about the beaches. I don't think there's ever been a hard and fast rule about, uh, non-Newton people going to the beach. It's all about the car. So if you, for instance, if my brother and his family come to my house, they live in Massachusetts, they can go with us. The only thing is we all have to go in my car because I have the resident sticker on my car. And, you know, and we park there. And so, so that'd be the only thing. If we did the wristbands, uh, we'd have to, somebody would have to say there with me type thing. I think, I think it's probably, when the chief first told me about it, I thought it was a good idea, but maybe it, maybe it goes a little too far. I still think the main thing is the cars. And we just have to keep control of, I think all, we've said it, it's, it's a rule. All vehicles have to have the, uh, the town sticker. And I think if I was, if I was leaving my kids with a babysitter who's going to go down to the town beach, I'd give them my car because the car seats are in it anyway. And I hate moving those things, but that's just, my kids are in car seats. But, um, I don't know. What's everybody think?
I agree because there's only so much parking and if our Newton residents want to use a babysitter, it's only, how else can it work? I wish. I wish we did.
What if they, if they're babysitting for the summer and can they get one of those temporary, um, placards for the beach? Just for like July and August, but June's over anyway.
That's a good idea.
They can get a letter from the, they can get a letter from the resident saying, yeah, this is my babysitter. This is her cat. And then she has the, um, the yellow placard.
Great idea.
So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we, uh, skip the wristband idea? And just basically put it out there if, if there's a childcare issue that requires a non-Newton stickered vehicle at the town beach, they need to, as Larry just described, send an email to the B O S secretary and we'll take it on a case-by-case basis, I think. Is everybody okay with that? I'd just be interested to see how many cases there are. I don't, I don't know that there'd be a, a ton, but we kind of don't know until we try, I think.
So maybe what you could do is tell the lifeguards or the police that if they run into that situation to get in touch with the town hall.
That's what I mean. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So Larry just made that motion, Diane, if you.
That's a motion for.
It's a very complicated motion, but it's.
I don't think it's a motion.
So I think what Larry. I think what Larry's going to say is that, um, we want to further emphasize that the town beach is for, town beach parking is for Newton stickered vehicles only. However, those who have childcare issues that require an out-of-town vehicle need to contact the lifeguards. Is that what you meant to say, Larry?
Contact the lifeguards to contact town hall for a temporary placard.
Contact the lifeguards and then that, let the lifeguard know and then the lifeguard can tell them to contact me. But I don't want people trying to contact me and I don't know who they are, you know?
I'm sending in already, Diane. I'm sending one right now. One right now.
And the lifeguards aren't there Monday and Tuesday.
Right.
Right. Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Sunday. All right. So they're going to contact the lifeguards. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Is that, sorry.
A second. We're going to vote. Nancy, do you have something to say?
Well, I was just going to say, is that specific for just daycare people, people who are babysitting? Because we've had issues where a resident in Newton would have all their friends from other towns pile into that one car and all go down there.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't, we want that. I think we're, that's why I put in the motion, or Larry put in the motion, the childcare issues require.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I, I don't think we want it abused and I think the lifeguards, lifeguards will be, and I'll talk to them or the lifeguard manager, but the lifeguards will know quickly, I think, if it's an abuse of.
Okay, okay.
All right, let's vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Eye.
Kate?
Eye.
And Matt's and I. Uh, so that's unanimous. Diane, uh.
I have no idea what the motion's going to be, but when I go back to their recording, I'll fix it.
I'm sure it'll be fine and then you'll, you'll give me the minutes and I'll communicate that through Scott. Lifeguards, but. All right. Anything else for tonight other than minutes?
Minutes and payroll.
Payroll. So anybody want to do the minutes or want me to just do them? I'll do, uh, I would move to approve the non-public and public meeting minutes of, what was that, June?
16th.
16th, 2020.
Second.
Segmented by Larry, uh, roll call vote. Kate?
She's muted.
I can feel her. Larry?
Eye.
Matt's and I, that's unanimous. I'm also going to move to approve the selectmen's public meeting minutes dated June 17th, 2020. Could I get a second?
Second.
Segmented by Kate, roll call vote. Larry?
Eye.
Kate?
Eye.
And Matt's and I, that's unanimous. And you said we have a payroll manifest?
Yep, you need to, motion to sign that.
Can you feed us the?
Yeah. So the payroll was for June 7th through the 20th with the payday of June 25, 2020.
Anybody want to so move that?
I'll so move.
Can we also use you to sign it there?
Well, remember, that's one of the things on the executive order, so that can be signed via email. Okay, roll call vote. Larry?
Eye.
Kate?
Eye.
And Matt's and I, that's unanimous. Anything else for this meeting? Hopefully not. There's a smoke detector going off in somebody's house. I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting at 7:12. Everybody's in favor. Everybody have a good night. Our next meeting is two, is, um, actually next Wednesday, right? So. Actually Diane wanted me to do this. But actually I'm not going to do it Diane because we only have three people anyway, so.
Yeah, those are the two that didn't respond.
Perfect. So Larry and Kate, look at your email from Diane talking about a potential and we'll post it for the public Tuesday meeting. So just take a look, please, next Tuesday meeting and let Diane know if you're available.
Okay, in lieu of the other Tuesday one or in addition?
No, no.